To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. The board met in closed session. Items we met on were item 1A, general services, consideration of accepting a donation of property. Direction was given. Item 1B, this is county negotiators, that's a property, possibility of acquiring 27 acres known as Pioneer Park from the BOM, direction on that was given. And Conference of Labor Negotiators, there's nothing to report. Confidential minutes were approved, and I think Vice Chair, could you please report on item 3?
Item 3 update was given.
Okay, well, thank you. With that, we're going to move into public matters not on the agenda. Is there any members of public that'd like to address this board? And please note, there's a three-minute limit per person, and would you sign in and state your name for the record, please? And also, just for the record, Supervisor Forster is on a family vacation, so that's why he's not here today. Good morning, Lois. You might want to pull it down a little bit to...
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, if that makes sense. Okay. Well, New California is still working long, and we are really concerned about the children that are being taken and held and used for purposes. And it's actually, it's a form of slavery to take these children. And there's hundreds of thousands of them across the border and have disappeared. And so we have got a new statement about that. So I'm going to read part of it, and then Oral will finish it. Okay, "We, the people of the great New California state, notice to all Californians the Declaration of the Fourteenth Constitutional Default. The citizens of New California have decided to remedy the abuse of power by the government of California by exercising their right to form a new state provided in United States Constitution Article 4, Sections 3 and 4. We are determined to live under a state government in the United States of America and under the Constitution of the United States. The people of California are suffering from a tyrannical state government, which fails to provide a republican form of government, enables and supports access to its southern border to the invasion of the United States of America by illegal foreign nationals, and protects vicious criminals who commit outrageous acts of violence upon the citizens of America, all caused by a government of and for a mono-party system led by a tyrannical, pusillaneous dictator who openly defies federal law." And so now Oral will read our 10th indictment.
Thank you very much. As I read this, I just wanted to share first, I really hope that it's, I back this up 100% for New California and what has been written here. And in addition, this morning, if I had an opportunity, Chairman, I might come back and have that three minutes about pro-life. So it would be up to the board on that. It is evident over the last three years, since the most corrupt presidential election in American history of 2020, that the coordinated design for the destruction of the United States has come from Joe Biden and Gavin Newsom, who have both spearheaded the effort to trample on and destroy the U.S. Constitution. Nothing is more glaring to the American citizens that both Biden and Newsom have complete contempt for the rule of constitutional law than to witness the duality with which they have both openly violated Article 4, Section 4, and its guarantees of a republican form of government, keeping all Americans free from invasion and that of domestic violence. It is clear both are committing treason. The three most assured aspects of our Constitution is the guarantee that all three elements of Article 4 will be adhered to by all compact members of the Union of States. Like a three-legged stool, to remove one leg, the stool itself becomes destabilized and ultimately useless. Likewise, if one state fails to provide any one of the three guarantees, then the Union of States becomes less stable. If any one state fails to provide all three elements of Article 4, it is in default of its responsibilities to its citizens to constitutionally govern. The federal government under Biden and the state government of California under Newsom both have removed the legs out from under Article 4, Section 4, and thus destabilized the United States, we call the United States of America. Our republican form of government vanishes when corrupt election systems destroy our God-given rights to self-govern. So it is with invasion. When the citizens have no authority to control, who enters the county? Invaders take over the land. Then domestic violence follows and becomes the new law of the land. Only once in our American history have we witnessed the collapse of all three elements of Article 4, and that was the Civil War of 1861 to 62. Now, on the eve of our nation's second civil war comes mankind's most evil institution, the same evil institution that brought us the first civil war. Slavery. Due to the lack of constitutional governance, slavery has found a home in California. Encouraged and supported by Gavin Newsom and Joe Biden, slavery is, in all its variants, flourishes. The most evil of slave evil is child sex trafficking, where babies to teen children are bought and sold for sexual pleasure or organ transplant in China. The latter are slaughtered and their organs harvested. Gavin Newsom and Joe Biden's evil is ours now. The governments of the U.S. and California, the current socialist president of the U.S., governor dictator, and mono-party system, along with local officials, are following a coordinated design with the intent to actively engage in acts of insurrection against the U.S. Constitution. This is treason. Biden and Newsom both have placed in their respective positions by numerous fraudulent elections. Biden and Newsom both preside as dictators of all three branches of their respective governments. The government branches long succumbed to the fraudulent elections and the treasonous bureaucratic state that now both rule what are known as democracies.
If you're ready, I'll wrap it up there pretty quick, Dr. Custer.
One more paragraph. Biden, Newsom both openly endorse and use the machinery of government to support the invasion of the United States and California, destruction of lawful behavior by promoting domestic violence. In a recent letter to Biden from Texas Governor Greg Abbott, who wrote, "President Biden and his administration have left Americans in our country completely vulnerable to unprecedented illegal immigration pouring across the southern border. Instead of upholding the rule of law and securing the border, the Biden administration has attacked and sued Texas for stepping up to protect American citizens from historic levels of illegal immigrants, deadly drugs like fentanyl, and terrorists entering our country."
Good morning, Board Supervisors. Chris Strong from Ione, California. We just want to let you know, in New California, we had in a public event at the Capitol last Friday that was, I want, we want you guys to be aware of. I think as time goes by and you sort of get used to the tyranny, the gradual creep of tyranny, and it's important to say for what it is, because I think most Americans realize we're living in a state of increasingly chaotic, tyrannical government. We just had the COVID mandates, millions of people have been injured by these, the media is not complicit. We don't have representation in our state government, and the tipping point for me is child sex trafficking, organ harvesting, and foreign nationals coming right across our border unchecked. We went from a COVID scare where we wouldn't let anyone into our country, and now everybody's coming into our country. I remember 9/11 in 2001 where we were so concerned about foreign military nationals, and now they're just coming across unchecked. And so I think we, like I said, we get used to this gradual creep of allowing these abuses to happen, and I think most people can agree, we're approaching a tipping point in this country, and this isn't, this isn't just a hyperbole, this is something where our country's at stake. And this issue with child sex trafficking, for me, I take it personally, because this is going on. We had this event where our pro-tempore governor, Paul Preston, reminded us about the history of California. California was the, if not the first, one of the first states to put slavery, prohibiting slavery, in their constitution. It was actually in Article 1, Section 18. And then it was, that was in 1849, and then in 1865, the Thirteenth Amendment was added prohibiting slavery in our country. And then, I don't know if you're aware, in 1879, there was a new constitution adopted in California. It was just papered over. It wasn't even an amendment to the original, it was an entirely new constitution in 1879, which led to so many amendments now, and there's over 900 amendments now. But that adopted constitution even prohibited slavery, and now we have across the border, these children, they're purchased. They're purchased from a foreign location, and they're brought in. And we even had a state senator candidate, Shirley DeBassett, she was in attendance at that meeting on Saturday, and she witnessed in August, I don't know if you're aware of, in the Bay Area, there was a ship that was brought in with, I don't know the exact number, it was around 100 children that were on the ship, and they weren't docked on land, because that's under county jurisdiction for sheriffs. They keep them in this maritime waters, international waters, and these children were discovered, and many of them were actually marked with their body parts, because they had already been purchased. And this is going on, and it's really on us, it's on we, the people, and on everyone, definitely who's worried.
What do you mean, marked with their body parts?
They were, had been purchased at a, basically from a foreign location for heart, kidney, any type of body part, because they could be killed, probably sacrificed, those organs would be purchased, and a buyer had already paid for that. So they were already basically donated, or, what was the word, purchased?
Yeah.
Yeah, a sticker denoting who had purchased them and for what body part. Yeah, organ, organ. I mean, obviously not a finger, but a valuable organ body part. Yeah, and many of the children had died en route, and this was, this wasn't in the news, because the news is complicit, the media is complicit with this, and we just can't keep acknowledging this. And Governor Newsom, President Biden, they're complicit with this, they're giving a blind eye to this, probably because they're, they benefit off of this. But obviously, foreign invasion, that's children, and that's slavery, too. When you're purchased for use for someone else, that's slavery, and that doesn't even get into the foreign nationals that could be coming into our country. So we just, I have this press release for this event Friday, we read this at the Capitol in front of the governor's mansion there, is that his mansion or just his office? I'm not sure. In front of the Capitol. And so you can read this, and we're not up here to try to raise, you know, get attention or something. This is something that, if this doesn't stop, I mean, I don't know at what point you just give in and concede to total outright tyranny, because it's not going to happen under New California's watch and under my watch, and so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And this is a very serious issue, so we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of public? Hold on a second there, Dr. Custer. Hold on, Lois. Butch, you come up to speak, Butch? Okay.
Good morning, members of the board. Butch Cranford, Plymouth, California.
Morning.
I come to you today to speak on an issue that apparently the board believes is not in the interest of the public, the public notice of the IS MND. I'd like to know when that's going to happen, for the Board of Supervisors to inform the citizens and taxpayers of this county that they are meeting and conferring with the Ione Band, apparently to reach an agreement on the proposed casino, which is now moved from the city of Plymouth to the county. I would hope that the Board of Supervisors would at least meet and confer with their residents and taxpayers to the same degree that they're meeting and conferring with the Ione Band. The IS MND is woefully inadequate, and that's being kind. Your own planner has informed me that it is, it is not adequate. This Plymouth planner has come to the same conclusion, it's not specific, and it's filled with a host of false, misleading, and unsupportable statements. First of all, the project is not a reservation, the project site is not a reservation. They included the term reservation 135 times in the first 73 pages of this document. They can put it in there 10,000 times, and it doesn't make it a reservation. So one of the things that, as an act of good faith, the Ione Band ought to be requested to do is to provide this county and our citizens and residents with the evidence that it is a reservation. Just ask for the document, as an act of good faith from the Ione Band. The 2009 FEIS on which this IS is based, it doesn't take, it doesn't take much of a mathematician to figure out that the newest data that could possibly be in this document, this environmental document, is 15 years old, and some of the data is 20 years old. I would hate to be meeting and conferring on a project where I have to look at data that is a decade or two decades old. Makes no sense to me. All the maps that are included in the IS MND are wrong. On more than one account, they're wrong. They are simply wrong. They are not accurate, they're misleading, and they're false. The FEIS from 2009 contains no mention of a 349 machine casino in the county, not one, not anywhere. There is nothing in the FEIS from 2009 remotely related to a casino in the county. Oh, and all the maps in the FEIS from 2009 are wrong as well. So meeting and conferring with a group that, in my opinion, is willing to mislead you for decades, might not be the wisest thing to do without asking for some supporting documentation. There is no map in the FEIS that shows Village Drive as the main entrance to the casino, not one. The main entrance is located elsewhere, and I would suggest that if the Ione Band wants to move the casino to the county, the main entrance should be in the county and not in the city of Plymouth. There's no documents to support the claims made by the BIA in the deeds, the 2020 deeds alleging to take the parcels into trust that the Ione Band is eligible for the Indian Land Consolidation Act. It's a simple thing to ask for these documents. If they have them, they should provide them, as an act of good faith. Asking questions doesn't cost anything. The project site is not eligible for gaming, it's not a reservation, it's not in trust. Oh, and the land was allegedly taken into trust by the acting regional director in Sacramento. Anybody who's familiar with federal law understands that for land into trust to be approved for gaming under the Indian Gaming Regulatory Act requires the Secretary of Interior's approval, not the acting regional director, who happens to work for Amy Dusky, a member of the Ione Band. No conflict of interest there. It's time to start asking the Ione Band to produce the documents that support that they are eligible for the Indian Land Consolidation Act, 25 U.S.C. 2101. The requirements are right there. Why don't we ask them for the evidence that they voted against the IRA in 1934? How about the trust deeds for the Ione Indians indicating that land was held in trust for them prior to March 17, 2020? Or how about the land consolidation plan that's required to prove by the Secretary of the Interior? I'm sure they have all these documents. It would be easy for them to produce them, as an act of good faith. Just request the Ione Band produce all these documents prior to any further meet and confer meetings, and prior to any agreement. The Ione Band is the group that needs the agreement, not Amador County. Soon as you agree, if you agree, they will have an investor, which they have not been able to procure for the last 21 years. Once they have an investor, you're going to have a casino in your county. It's time for the Board of Supervisors to start asking these important questions and taking actions to assure the project site alleged trust acquisition complies with federal law. It's a simple thing. Questions are not hard to ask. If you're not sure what questions to ask, I would be, I would be more than happy to assist the board in preparing a list of questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Should I sign in again? No, not necessary.
I hope to have an opportunity to share with the gentleman that just spoke, because I agree with 90% of what he just shared. This, what I want to read now is a report, a letter from a company called Live Action, and it's in support of essentially what we have shared, that we support pro-life, and what we've just shared about New California being against illegal immigration and human trafficking, and it fits right in with this. The leader and president of Live Action has said this. "Research shows that as many as 75% of women who see ultrasounds of their pre-born babies embrace life. That's why abortion activists are trying to eliminate all ultrasound requirements before an abortion. Already dozens of states have no such lifesaving requirements. This has gotten worse with the expansion of abortion pills by male, ensuring that women won't even have to visit a doctor's office before getting deadly abortion pills at home and killing their babies. Even pharmacies like Rite Aid and CVS will soon be dispensing deadly abortion drugs. If we want to save lives, we have to reach women at home. We can't wait for them to visit their local pro-life pregnancy center. That's why we just released a window to the womb. It's a cutting-edge new web application that uses world-class 3D animation to reveal in breathtaking detail the development of a baby in the womb. It is already transforming hearts and minds. But we can't reach more expectant moms and dads with the truth without the support of passionate pro-life people like members of the Board of Supervisors." So I'd just like to support, I hope that you exercise influence that is pro-life. This is, it's gotten worse since Roe versus Wade was reversed by the Supreme Court, which would not have happened had it not been for the three new Supreme Court judges that were appointed by President Trump. I'm so grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of public? You know, if you'd just give me a minute, I'd like to indulge in something. Speaking about the border, a friend of mine is a federal law enforcement officer, went down there, he says, "God, was that a spooky place?" A number of years back, I saw, somebody sent me, you get these emails where there's all kinds of goofball stuff out there, trying to find the truth is really hard. And this one was a sign, I've been trying to find it, I can't find it anymore, but it had a picture, and it said, and they said this sign was like 80 or 100 miles inside the U.S. territory from the border with Mexico. And the sign, basically, as I recall, said something about warning, "Beyond this area, you will find armed gunmen, high-speed vehicles, if you see backpacks on the ground, do not approach. You see groups of people, don't approach," and yada, yada, yada. And it said Department of Parks. I thought, oh, it's one of those goofball things, you know? It had a phone number on it, so I was kind of curious, you know, I'm going to call that phone number. So I called the phone number, and this lady answers, "Hello, Department of Parks." And I stopped, and I went, "Uh, yeah, hi." I didn't know what to say, because I was expecting someone to answer, and so I told the lady, "Hey, you know, I saw this sign, and I just called the number." And she, "Oh, yeah." She says, "We have a major problem down here, it's really bad, and we're getting no help at all." So I just wanted to put that out there for the record, I found that really interesting. Anyway, with that, any members of the board like to comment on anything? Two minutes, Lois.
Okay, I just wanted to say that California is doing nothing to stop...
Okay, I just wanted to say that California is doing nothing to stop the border. And one reason is because California is out of money. We don't have money to put the National Guard in place, because we're out of money. And so I'd like to say that Paul Preston, as the president of New California, he is asking other states' governors to send their National Guard to help us. We have no place else to turn because California will not close that border, they will not help. And so he has sending letters to other governors to ask them to send their National Guard. We are in a desperate situation in California. Since Texas has closed their border, more and more are coming to California. And the problem is that most of these are military-age Chinese men, and they are being housed at Indian reservations in Southern California and at, what's the army base in Southern California? Can't think of it. And so they're coming in, there's tens of thousands of them are coming in. And so Governor Abbott got them stopped from Texas, so now there are more, and they're coming to Arizona and to California. This is a desperate situation. And so I just wanted to let you know that this, we are trying in New California to find a solution, because our governor, he just wants to be president, and so he's papering over the budget deficit, spending money, outwardly spending a lot of monies and saying, oh, I'm spending money for this, this, and this. Well, he's stealing it from the schools and from the from the counties. Some of the counties are laying off under deputy sheriffs, and I would like, would be interested in a report of how our county is doing money-wise, because the governor has no money, since he has displaced.
If you want to, if you want to stay around, Lois.
Yeah.
Probably in a little while, we'll be having a budget hearing during this meeting.
You have a budget here?
Yep, it's coming up. It is item five D, so it's right off the winery ordinance, so you've probably got four items to go, and.
Okay, I will, I will stand and listen to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, looking for approval agenda.
So moved.
Second. Uh, motion by Cruz, second, I think, was by Brown.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous, four zero one. Move down, we have approval of items of consent agenda. We have a couple, we have a couple items to add on that consent agenda. Item, we have one item, Sheriff's Office, approval of standard agreement between the county and Sheriff's Office and Department of State Hospitals, that's item one A. We'll put that down as seven V on the consent. And our next one is item one B, it's Law Library Committee, approval of reappointment of the following persons to the subject committee through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Grace Pack, Corey Tierpack, John Allen, John C. Fowler. We'll put that down as item seven W on the consent. And looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Those changes.
Second.
I think motion by Axe, I think it was the second, by Brown again. He's just too quick down there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It carries four zero one. Move down to our regular agenda. We have item five A, this is a presentation or proclamation, recognizing the month of March as Red Cross Month. And we have a representative from Red Cross, Ms. Sims. Would you like to speak about this?
I'd love to. Don't you lend us, um, do I have to sign this thing?
Yes, you do.
Or is that just a public comment? Oh, okay.
And if your friend's gonna speak, she needs to sign into.
Not funny.
You spoke. I'm kidding, no, you're fine, you don't have to sign in.
Just for good measure.
Okay.
Well, we want to thank you so much for this recognition. March every year is proclaimed Red Cross Month in the United States, and we've had, Red Cross has been in Amador for well over a hundred years, and as you read the history of the Argonaut disaster and all that, Red Cross was very, very involved back then, more than a hundred years ago, already established. What we do, besides the disasters that you always hear about, is local, regional, and national disasters, and we do a lot of preparedness, education now, from the kindergarten level, where we have a program called Prepare with Pedro, to senior citizens. We're gonna be at the seniors' center on this next week, doing a presentation on fire safety and evacuation, just getting, help get seniors prepared at their monthly luncheon. We also have a national smoke alarm installation called Sound the Alarm, where we collaborate with fire departments, and they install the alarms, and we do a preparedness piece and talk about what, you know, what you need to do if you have to evacuate for any reason. We also do health and safety training, we also do blood services, and of course, service to the armed forces, which is where we all started in the Civil War. I didn't introduce my cohort. This is Jo Lutrell, she's also, we're both residents of Plymouth County. Jo lives right here in Jackson, and she's one of our newer volunteers. What we're looking for is to build up our capacity, we have to be able to stand up shelters if the sheriff requests us to. And right now, we are able to do that, but we could certainly use more help. So if you hear of somebody who's looking for a very fulfilling volunteer opportunity, please send them toward the Red Cross. Or if you have a group that wants preparedness presentations, we do that also. Anyway, thank you so very much for the presentation, for the proclamation, and.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Noah Red Cross done a lot of good work for a lot of years. Some of those people are in need, I mean, you come in, you help out, and it's, and you got a lot of, a lot of people, a lot of horsepower, and really good, it's a really good, good organization. We have a proclamation here, or resolution, excuse me. I'll go ahead and read that, if you, and then we'll all come down, we'll present it, you get some pictures if you'd like. San Francisco County Board of Supervisors, Resolution twenty-four, Day two eight. Resolution, recognize the month of March as Red Cross Month. Whereas during the American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Amador County and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community, it advances the humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering, and whereas today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they step up through the Red Cross in the California Gold Country region to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a lifesaving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through the unique challenge of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crises. And whereas we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join this commitment to strengthen our community, therefore be it resolved that the Amador County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-four as Red Cross Month and encourage all citizens of Amador County to reach out, support its humanitarian mission. Foregoing resolution was passed by Board of Supervisors on March twelfth, two thousand
Mr. Chair, will make a motion to approve the resolution, or?
Also good. Okay, we have a motion by Axe, second by Cruz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous. Thank you for that. Moving down, we have item five B, this is an update on tree mortality mitigation activities by Ted Mason, TSS Consultants, and here we have, today, we have Dr. Richard Harris and
Good morning, this is Ted Mason.
Good morning, Ted.
Morning, Chairman and Board members. I'll be reporting in remotely, but we do have the A team of Dr. Harris and Eddie Strufnager presenting in purpose, I'm sorry, presenting in person. We have a short, eight-slide deck to provide our periodic update of the tree mortality program, and with that, I'll pass the microphone on to Dr. Harris.
Greetings, haven't seen you in a while.
Good morning.
All the faces still look familiar. Where's Forster, he's on vacation?
Yes, yep.
Oh, good for him. Avoiding all the ION issues, huh? Okay, so this is, how many times have we done this? And, you know, we're kind of, I think it's been almost seven years. So just a program summary, since we started in two thousand seventeen, we've done twenty-five tree mortality projects, removing dead and hazardous trees that are located along county roads. So far, we've taken out over nine thousand trees, and we've done a pretty good job in terms of avoiding any kind of, no worker injuries, no serious property damage, you know, the reimbursements have all come through from OES. So we're very happy with the way the project's gone, and hopefully you guys are too. We just finished three projects covering the entire county east of Highway forty-nine. If you can recall, the original proclamation was basically for bark beetle kill trees, you know, in the sort of conifer belt. But what we found over time is that we've also had a lot of mortality at the lower elevations. So these last three projects were at the higher elevations. We completed the last one on December eleventh. So we've, we've treated all county roads bordering US Forest Service and BLM lands and private lands where there have been hazardous trees. I mean, some, some roads have not had hazardous trees, but, you know, we've taken out as many as we can along all the county roads that have them. Now, there have been fourteen different tree service companies, and again, no, no issues, no serious issues. And we're so happy with that, because if you think about it, some of the biggest issues that have been associated with tree mortality have actually, have actually fell on, fell on Southern California Edison and PG&E, where workers have been, you know, even killed while removing hazardous trees. So we've been so lucky. I mean, so lucky. Luck on wood. We've got, public support has been good. You know, the way that we, we actually, we don't acknowledge that by all the kudos we get from people, we acknowledge that by the lack of complaints. So, so that's really, it's kind of funny, but we get a few kudos every now and then, but mainly, we're, we're happy we don't hear the phone ringing off the hook with people telling us, you know, we've got a problem.
There was one complaint I found intriguing.
What was that?
The one you've, when your group got a right of entry to property to remove one small little measly dead cedar tree, and the property exchanged hands and didn't get caught, and the contractor did a nice job of removing the cedar tree, and the new owner was very mad, and he, so I think you folks said, we'll replace the wood, we'll do everything we can do, and.
Oh.
He just wanted to be mad. I found it was kind of, kind of interesting.
Well, that, you know, that does happen where properties change hands.
Nothing you could really, it's really almost hard to prevent, but it's, it's kind of interesting, because really, did the guy a favor and a service, and he just wanted to be mad?
That's the thing that kind of blows our mind, is that we're doing you a favor, and when people complain about, well, we don't want your, our tree out, well, it's a dead tree, we're doing you a favor. I mean, we don't take out live trees, and, you know, sometimes we have to explain that to people, because sometimes they'll actually tell Ed, is this tree gonna come back? You know, instead, it's a doornail, and, you know, they think, if I water it, it'll come back. I mean, we've had that happen, right? If I water it, it's gonna come back, right? Well, not so much. Okay, so we have three projects underway or in advanced planning. There's two on Forest Service ground. We're literally totally snowed out at Silver Lake and Bear River, but those projects will take place as soon as we can get in there. And those are covered by a, an agreement between the Forest Service and the county, where the Forest Service will reimburse the twenty-five percent of the costs that are not reimbursed by Cal OES. So it's a total wash in terms of the cost for those Forest Service projects. It's a really good thing. We have another project, and Ed and I will be out there marking the trees today, Project twenty-three, there's on the county roads that are west of forty-nine. We have sixty parcels, and there's two BLM parcels and some county road right-of-way parcels as well. So we're gonna mark those trees. We've kind of delayed a little bit on this, because we want to wait till the trees leaf out a little bit, so we can tell, you know, we, we go out there and we see, you know, they look like they're dead, but they come back to life, so we don't want to take out any trees that are living. So we have to wait a little bit until they start to break butt. Okay, I've already talked about the projects on national forest land, and I've already talked about the reimbursement. So there's some pictures of the Forest Service ground, you know, this is at Bear River. You can see all those red dots are dead trees, all those red dots.
A lot of trees.
A lot of trees, a lot of mortality in the high elevations among the fir, okay? You know, it's things of, I mean, you can go on to the next slide, that's the other project that's up at Silver Lake, and look at the density of the trees up there in that limited area. There's over fourteen hundred trees in these two projects, and by the time we get out there, there's gonna be probably, you know, a lot more. I mean, they're just sort of dropping like flies before your eyes, so. Next slide. So new mortality is still showing up. I would say, and I think Ed would probably agree, that the mortality that we're experiencing now is at a lesser intensity than it was in the beginning. You know, we've had some pretty good rainfall over the last couple of years, so things are starting to do a little bit better, but it's not so much that the mortality has stopped, it's kind of shifted, right? So from the bark beetle kill trees, pines, we're starting to see more like dead firs, dead incense cedar, oaks, ornamental trees, I mean, it's, the susceptibility to the drought over the many, many years we've had the drought has basically, you know, resulted in cumulative mortality, not due to insects, but due just to basically the trees giving up the ghost after so many years of stress. Just a few pictures, and then, so we continue to see new mortality, and even species such as alder, which are located along watercourses. You know, we're finding some of those are succumbing. Less mortality than observed in previous years at the low to mid elevations, higher mortality at the higher elevations, I would say, or at least it hasn't tapered off at the higher elevations. The Forest Service, in fact, has recognized this, and they created sort of a task force to look at a high elevation fir mortality specifically, because it's really, it's pretty So in all of our projects, we normally have to mark additional newly dead trees, so when we go out today, you know, we may see some trees that we didn't see the first time around, and we'll mark those if we have right-of-entry forums. I do the processing of all the right-of-entry forums. We used to have those sent to. We used to have those sent to the county and then the county, you know, fill up its file, file drawers with paper forms. But now I take care of all that at my end. I have the forms sent to me and I enter them into the spreadsheet. We still are able to use Cindy Engel as a consultant to us. After she left ACR, ACTC, you know, she moved to Washington, but she agreed to help us out with, with mapping, so we're blessed by having her services. She's just really been phenomenal over all these years. And so, we, we give her the form, you know, the, the spreadsheets with the parcels on it. She produces the maps. She gives those maps to Ed. The maps now have the trees located on them, so when we go out, we can actually GPS and see the trees. Where before we just had the parcels and we knew there was a tree there. Now, we know exactly where the trees are. So, there we go. We'll, we'll put 23 together over the next month or two, probably implement it early summer. I don't know about, you know, where we go from there. There's no indication that CalOES is curtailing this program. So, you know, in a way, what's kind of shifting from, you know, emergency mortality to like continuing maintenance, which is a good thing for you guys because that takes the burden off of you and your public works people to do that continuing maintenance. So, as long as CalOES is willing to pay you to do these projects, you're going to be able to take care of these hazardous trees and that takes the burden off of your, your public work folks. The public work folks will sometimes call us and say, hey, we got a tree out here. Ed will go and take a look and if it's one that we can, we can remove as part of a project, we're good. So, anyway, that's, it's proactive removal of hazardous trees before they fall on the road and then you have to send six people out there to try to remove it, right? It's a good deal. So, again, we have a negotiation with the Forest Service and we still have a few things to work out with them. They seem to want to do it as a conventional timber sale. We've never done that before. We've always done it as a permit and it's worked out fine. So, we're going to hoping we can, you know, kind of smooth those wrinkles out a little bit before we actually go out there and do the work. The trees are difficult to sell, right? Decking them and trying to sell them. We got decks still out at Bear River.
You know, about that, Richard? If you could structure it to where if a person wanted to come in and do that hazard tree sale, the contractor, as a timber sale, that'd probably work. What they've done in the past is they went in there and they told somebody, take out those trees. And they cut them on all kinds of oddball links.
Right, exactly.
And then the foresters tried selling them, which it doesn't work. If they made it to where you could say, hey, we have this hazard tree sale. Whoever, whoever purchases it can either stack up the logs somewhere or, or they can haul the logs off while they're doing the work at the timber sale. That might work.
Well, we want them to take the trees. If they can sell them, that's great. They can take them over to Tahoe, you know, to Carson City, to, to the new mill over, that's great.
If the contractor doing the work and take them right, fall that tree, load it on a truck and gone, but when you save.
That, that's what we want.
That'd be the best.
That was, that's what we want. You know, we don't want to deck the logs for the Forest Service to sell. We want to do it the way you just.
And it'd be a lot, I think probably get a lot, a lot better, a lot, a lot cheaper price too, a better job.
You know, Rich Stevens did that on Silver Lake. Boom, the trees are gone, you know, and, and he was able to actually sell them, so.
And you have, and you have a lot less wear and tear in your roads because rather than dragging them all down the decks and trying, a lot of times you can load them right, right, right where they fall, a self loader and still clean them.
I've taken too much time. Have any questions, you guys?
Yeah, one quick question, Dr. Harris. How else do you dispose of the trees? You know, is biomass going anywhere at this point?
Well, you know, it's, it's interesting, you know, some, sometimes we were taking trees over to Willseville because there's going to, there was, there's this biomass plant that's supposedly going to be constructed there. I don't know if they're still taking logs. We find that a lot of logs go to the shavings plant down in Jamestown. So, they're used for animal bedding. If they're good saw lo, saw logs, then they, they might go to SPI, usually down, down south, not, not in Lincoln. So, our, our contractors are pretty astute in terms of how they get rid of these trees. I mean, they find all sorts of ways to get rid of them, yeah, but, you know, and we give them credit for that.
Is there enough options or, or is it a bare minimum?
What would you, Ed, you want to say something about that? I mean, Ed's, Ed's our marketing expert.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. Ed Strufeneger, I'm the consulting forester on the project. Yeah, the marketing of, of logs is very challenging. You know, we've had big fires which reduces the amount of logs that Sierra Pacific Industries wants to take because they're salvaging their own trees from these fires. We're seeing that the export market is, I won't say drying up, but there seems to be a lot of highs and lows. And now there's a low with the export market down in Sacramento. Ampine was a big, big blow, being able to take logs to Ampine was always an option and now they're gone. And we don't think there's any hope that they're coming back anytime soon. You hear about all these things going on, what they call SAF, sustainable aviation fuel, big places down in Stockton, ethanol plants, things like that. Those are all out in the planning stages and they're not helping us now. So, these are maybe things that we can look at maybe years from now, but in terms of like, what do we do for the next upcoming projects? Getting rid of logs is, is a, is a really big deal. And like Richard mentioned, we got a new sawmill that they're building up, that has been built up in Carson City. That's really good for the high elevation areas, taking the logs over there. But for the rest of it, it is always a, always a challenge.
Okay. So, is there any, you know, a lot of our locals have to get rid of logs and stuff. Is, is there any process that they can do for private?
Yeah, there, there is. I mean, and don't get me wrong, I know PG&E has done a lot of work in the county since the.
Yeah, they, they drop a lot of logs, but they don't take all of them.
That's right, yeah. And, and a lot of logs that they, that they have dropped, I think Richard had mentioned that, that basically, you know, we sometimes get associated with that type of operation that, no, we, when we say we're going to remove a log, we're going to remove a log. I'd say probably 95 to 98% of the, of the trees that we've taken out, we've removed those trees. The only ones we can't are if they're on the other side of a creek or on very steep ground or something like that. So, it, so it does get to be challenging. PG&E did have a, a yard at the Martel, at the old decking grounds at Martel early on to go ahead and take logs there and then they chipped them up and I don't know where those chips went.
They went to biomass plant.
They went to a biomass plant, but, but yeah, I think there was, you know, talk of the old cedar mill up in Pioneer having a, like a reload yard to go and merchandise logs. That unfortunately never materialized, so it's just an ongoing issue trying to, to get rid of this. And, and a lot of the people ask us, they say, hey, how do we get rid of our logs? Either from PG&E or logs that they've had drop on their property and it's, it's, it's a big problem, yeah.
So, do you, do you see any of the, the supply of logs changing in the future, diminishing? Or it seems like they always grow back, don't they?
They do, yeah, yeah. And I think what's happening is, as Richard said, the, the mortality will never get back to that low baseline level that we've seen in the county. I mean, everybody says, okay, well, there's a baseline. Trees are growing and dying things that at some point you expect that we're going to get back down to maybe 3% mortality, 4%, 4% mortality is what we've seen in the past. I don't know we'll ever get back to that point because that's based upon, you know, trees always renewing themselves and in the past that was done by logging. We'd have a lot of small, you know, property owners logging their parcels. You get new trees coming up, the older trees are gone. That, that hasn't happened on a larger basis in, you know, in basically in Amador County here for, for a number of years. And so, we're getting more trees, larger trees competing against each other. And I think that mortality, that baseline mortality is just going to continue to come on up. But in terms of supply of trees, yeah, there is always, there's always plenty of trees up there. So, I think the bigger problem is how do we get rid of the ones that are dying?
Right, okay. Thank you.
Any members of public? You know, one thing, being as you're here and I think you're probably on video, your program is available to people that have a tree that will hit a county road or county infrastructure. If that tree's dead and it's on a county road, you know, hit that, and can hit that county road, give you folks a call and more, contact the county and you'll come take those trees out.
Right, we don't want to be misleading though. I mean, sometimes with the press releases that we put out, we get calls from people who have, you know, they have got a dead tree that's in a defensible space. Cal Fire has red tagged them, get rid of the tree. They think that we can provide that service. So, there has to be clear, and I always am very clear with, with anybody who contacts me that if you have a tree that could hit a county road and that it's dead or that we determine is dying, that qualifies for the program. There used to be a program that was administered by, I think by the RCD or the Fire Safe Council where people could get funding to remove any dead tree on their property. That program no longer exists. So, that unfortunately for people who have a, a dead tree that, you know, is a hazard to their assets or that's a defensible space issue, we don't have any financial recourse to remove those trees. That's, that's a big hole in the whole system really.
I will say, I think it's been a real benefit to the, to the county and the residents of the county because sometimes in Silver Lake Pines, you guys are up there with cranes taking trees out away from houses and you got a real economy of scale, some of the bids you've got have been really phenomenally cheap. I mean, it probably costs homeowners five times as much to do it.
At least. We've, you know, over the years, we've taken out all the trees at an average cost for everything, including us, of less than $500 a tree. What was that one that you had over on Highway 88? Where they got a quote to remove the several trees around, what was that one?
Yeah, I talked to a property owner and they lived up, actually up in Silver, up by Silver Lake had a cabin up there. They had three trees removed at a cost of $27,000. So, yeah, it gets, it gets very expensive, yeah. So, don't get me wrong, these were difficult trees to remove, but I've talked to many other property owners, some in the Buckhorn Pioneer area that have spent, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars of removing dead trees from their property. And it is a, you know, it's a collateral benefit to the, the public is what we're doing for the county is also helping all these other people.
Yeah, and something that really kind of surprised me, I guess Calaveras County put their program at whole. Like, I think they spent too much money in some other, maybe, um, public safety programs.
How about code enforcement?
Okay, that's worth, that's their problem, huh?
Yeah, by the way, and you know, I don't want to say anything out of, out of sorts, but Calaveras has put the program back, back in place and.
That must be fairly new then.
Yeah, one of the reasons why they put it back in place last September was because a lot of folks came to the board meeting and said, hey, this is a benefit to us and to you. Why are you suspending the program? So, they, they just re-upped the program, so we're continuing with it.
Well, well, thank you.
Well done.
Thank you, sirs.
Thank you.
Well, this item we've all been waiting for. Item 5C, this discussion of possible action relative to approval of a resolution declaring the intention to create a wine heritage district. Another resolution requesting that Plymouth, Amador City and Settler Creek all participate in the creation of this district. Well. Mr. Stasio, would you like to, John, address this?
I think I'd be a spokesman. Thank you, Chairman Onetto, Board of Supervisors. I'm John Destasio, I'm the current president of the Amador Vintners Association and also the owner of Destasio Vineyards. I want to also thank several of our winery members that are here today to support this request. This resolution of intention really, as you know, because we've spoken to each of you, just establishes a public process. And by way of history, this is not a proposal that is an overnight thing. We've been working on this for two years. It started in March of 2022 with the strategic planning and the Vintners Association at that time determined their highest need was to have a sustainable source of funding. And part of to do that is, their, their mission is really to market the region, market the wineries on their behalf. But as you know, we've been very narrowly focused on a couple of large passport events and those generate the most revenue. They drive a lot of traffic to the county for just a few days a year. And they don't really provide a foundation for spreading out economic development, having more depth and breadth, the types of things we can do. So, we're in a little bit of a vicious cycle, if you will, where we're marketing the things that nobody thinks are ideal, but yet we don't have the money to create awareness and do things in collaboration with others and to create synergies. So, we started with the strategic plan adoption, the members of the AVA adopted it. We then did a feasibility study to look at a heritage district, which is a very common vehicle to create sustainable funding. Effectively, it's businesses assessing themselves. It's a pass through to the consumers, but by assessing themselves, they generate sustainable revenues to be able to market more broadly and to, again, collaborate with others. The feasibility study we did was acceptable and, and that was based on a 1% assessment. And that is only on direct to consumer sales within the tasting rooms, taxable events within the county. So, it's not for wineries that have large distribution and so forth. It's really just taxable events within Amador County that occur within direct to consumer sales in the tasting room. So, after that, we did a management district plan and then we undertook.
Question on that, John?
Yeah.
So, you're saying direct to consumer sales in the tasting room? So, people have their wine club members show up? That would be considered, that would be cut under this umbrella?
Yeah, yeah, if a wine club member comes in and they make a transaction within the tasting room or it's a taxable event within Amador County, yes. But distribution outside the state or even within the state would not be.
So, basically, almost like wholesale would not be taxed?
Yeah, and so when we, the one thing that we wanted to make sure we did was to be deliberative and also methodical and have a process that had integrity relative to communicating and outreach with the winery members. There's 92 or 98 O2 licensed wineries in the county. And I think we've made efforts, multiple efforts to contact every one of them. As you know, public processes are all, you can try to do your best to get people to engage and that isn't always the case, but we feel like we've done a very thorough job. We solicited support through a petition process and the law requires you achieve 51%. We've got around 60% and a higher percentage of those who responded. But at the end of the day, it still requires a public process to become a durable process. And I will say, adopting the resolution of intention does not presuppose adoption, but it does give this thing the light of day that it deserves, given the work that we've put into it, which is a public process. And the reason we need the county to do that is you need a lead agency that's authorized to collect taxes or in this case, an assessment. The, the one other feature I would say that I think is a positive, under all circumstances, this, the law requires that if, even under the establishment of this type of an assessment district, it has to sunset in five years. So, it's not, once you get it in, it's forevermore, even if it's not effective. And who determines it's effective is those who are assessed. And so, at the end of that five years, they'll have to make a determination to continue it. And then just the last thing I would say is that, you know, given the likelihood that we're all interested in sustainable funding, it's not likely that it's going to come from local governments, given the condition of the state and what the impacts might be in that regard. And we also want to do this in collaboration. We're working with ACT, we're working with the Chamber and we're hoping this initiative will create a catalyst to help generally with hospitality of all types, restaurants, lodging. help generally with hospitality of all types, restaurants, lodging, and also the wineries, which is a big economic engine for the county. So we're asking today that you adopt the resolution of intention and allow us to get the process started. There'll be a public meeting, I think, April 9th, as is currently planned, and then a final consideration of May 14th. And over that period of time, you'll have the opportunity to hear from the public. And I do think, once a proposal like this gets real, then people will likely come out. But I feel like we beat the bush as well, and we have a good sense of where the group is. And like I said, I feel like, longer term, this is beneficial, not just for the wineries, but for the county as a whole. So happy to answer any questions.
My question is, you know, this is a pass-through for the, through the county. And, you know, of course, we'll have administrative costs, you know, dealing with it. What is your thoughts on that?
So we talked to the county staff about it, and we even took the step of contacting HDL, who's a contract, they do the contract sales tax collection and other types, and this is a subset of sales tax. And the intent all along is that this is revenue-neutral to the county. And I do think the county staff has expressed, I don't want to speak for them, but they've said, we don't really want to take this on ourselves and have some kind of an unknown administrative burden. We did, because it's been done with other heritage districts, we did talk to HDL. We have a quote for that. But at the end of the day, prior to the adoption of this, it would be a 3% administrative cost, but if that ultimately ends up being inadequate, that's what we've been quoted so far, then the commitment we have is that it doesn't cost the county anything.
I think that'd be, we'd like to hear that. I mean, because, you know, county, I mean, we have issues like a lot of organizations do. You know, we've got a lot of road issues. And looking at the state of the state's going, I don't see the state or the federal government charging the rescues in the roads. They might make it worse, if anything.
No, the intent, and again, we fully intend to work with you, but our intent is to not have the county be out of pocket or subsidize this in any way.
I do like that sunset clause, the five years. I mean, that's, I think that's critically important to me, whichever way I vote. But if it wasn't, we didn't have something like that, I wouldn't even consider it.
Yeah. Well, I will say that others that have done it, I'm not aware, and we have Dion Dwyer, who you've met from MMS Strategies, and they actually run some of the property-based improvement districts and other types of assessment districts. And most of them have found the value where they do re-up, and I think, if not all. I'm not aware of others that have said, oh, after five years, this thing was bad. But the proof will be in the pudding, and you have metrics to say, did we get the things done we wanted to get? And we do have to report to the county once a year on how we're staying within the management district plan and fulfilling the commitments we've made to the members.
You know, I don't know if you guys, if your whole group will hit a grand slam, like, I've been in the cattle business for a lot of years, and there's certain breeds of good cattle. And a number of years back, Angus people got together, and they put a program together, and they had certified Angus beef. I mean, it was, I mean, it was phenomenal what they did. It's just, they almost cleared the field. And now certified Angus beef is like Angus cattle sell for a lot more, and they're just the same as other ones, but they're, they're a huge premium. So, yes, there can be some, sometimes those marketing schemes have some effect.
It really works.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, John. And there's got to be some members of public that'd like to comment on this?
Good morning. Tracy Burkner from Visit Amador and Taste and Rest in Plymouth, and just wanted to say that we have been working with the Amador Vintners Association and the Chamber of Commerce together to get this wine heritage district out there to the community. And I was on the original meeting in 2022, where everybody just kind of spent a few days really assessing what was important to the wineries and to the wine region. And it's wonderful to see it come this far. And this is an amazing way to have our community be self-sustaining and not have to scramble as we do when we're trying to grouse roots, put together funding. So it's a, it's a, it's a great way to do it. There are hundreds of districts like this in California, but in all of the United States, there are thousands more. And this is the funding way to sustain these organizations and to market, to sustain these businesses and build our economy. So just encourage you to vote in favor of this.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathleen Mahan. I'm president of Visit Amador, and I'm also the director of events at Hellway Winery. So I feel that being involved with this and all of the other efforts that ACT does with the TMD, that, just to echo what Tracy was saying and John, that it's imperative to have sustainable funding, that we can help all of the organizations by Visit Amador, the Chamber, and the Vintners, and also be able to cover costs so the Board of Supervisors and their team isn't having to foot the bill for the pass-through of how that's all allocated. And it allows us to bring tourism here, jobs here, and have our midweek, which we've all been waiting, to actually be able to sustain, to go outside of the box and be able to do that kind of competitive funding. So I really also behoove you to move forward with this, and thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of public? Those humors?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say that, you know, I've heard about this from Mr. Destasio, and I think it's a great idea. We did talk about metrics and tracking, you know, trying to be able to quantify the benefit. And I think he understands that. Also, Ms. Burkner and Kathleen, I think they understand that, too. And that's going to be crucial going forward to the success of this kind of program in the future, to continue it. And I think they understand that, and we'll make that happen. And anytime you're ready for a motion, I can make that.
Yeah, probably not, probably close.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one more question? Tacy, could you come forward? I know we have a crystal ball question here for you. What is your thoughts on all of this, since a lot of this will be coming through both of your departments?
Yes, actually, it'll affect the treasurer or tax collector much more, but we are definitely concerned about, I mean, right now, we don't have a mechanism in place to collect these fees or to go after delinquent fees. We don't have the staff available to do that. So we're pretty concerned that a 3% admin fee would not cover that staff person that would potentially need to be added. But again, do you have anything else, Liz?
Yeah.
More for the treasurer and tax collector.
Yeah, I could see maybe you might have a partial employee. I wouldn't see a whole employee.
Well, with discussion of this a year ago, I thought this was like already, you know, done and in the past. So I was quite surprised when I saw this come up this last week. We had talked previously with some other cities that had taken this on and regretted it. They said that the percentage that they were reimbursed was not enough to cover the fees. That was when we had suggested, and we'd also had reminded John that this is not a tax, it's an assessment. Don't call it a tax. And I'm trying to find my notes here, that having an outside collection agency, which they did change their terminology and this latest paperwork that they would have, and, you know, another option of having an outside accounting or a collection, you know, do the process, we're not set up to be reaching out and billing, you know, the postage involved, the mailing, being a collection agency, you know. At this point, we print the tax bills with the information from the assessor's office, we send them out, we collect the funds, you know. That's where we're at. We're not, you know, set up to take on another entities.
Now, if there's a third party collecting assessments, would there be much burden in the county at that point?
I wouldn't see how it would affect us, except for them depositing their money into the treasury. But they-
I agree.
-work with the Chamber of Commerce, you know, Chamber of Commerce or Amador Council Tourism, you know, they have their people or their accounting, you know, setup that could possibly, you know, take this over. I'm looking at-
So I think if the county was to move forward, I know where I'd be if we did. I wouldn't want it, you know, being a big burden on staff, or if it was, they'd have to basically make us whole, cost-wise.
I'd say, yeah, because right now, you know, we have, I have a really small staff. I have my chief deputy, Treasury Tech, and two other employees.
Yes, I think if it goes forward, I think we'll cover those bases. And then we'll time, we'll see if it goes forward. I mean, right now, I don't know if the numbers have changed. You're looking at almost 60% of the wineries have given ballots back, or like, yeah, they're in favor of it. I'd like to see that number have been higher. But maybe there's some, you know, I don't know how many are opposed, and there might be a number of people saying, hey, we don't care one way or another.
Well, and then how are you going to, you know, track those costs? You know, somebody could say, oh, yeah, I'm going to participate. And it's like, when I, you know, well, when I'm having to pay a 1% or whatever the fee is that they've came up with, and it's like, well, you know, they're going to have to do their own tracking, somebody's going to have to follow that, you know. And, you know, it's like, are those numbers factual? You know, it's like, okay, well, our numbers this month were, you know, $10,000. It's like, or were they $8,000? It's like, and then all that self-reporting, and then, you know, following up on that. So-
Okay.
That's, yeah, just the concerns as far as, we don't have the time, management, or the staffing, you know, or, you know, the cost.
Okay. I think maybe that's something we can talk about maybe down the road, just say, hey, the county doesn't want to be really involved in collecting and managing this, and it's your baby, and, you know, leave it at that.
Unless there's another department that wants to take it on.
Liz, you said that you talked to other cities or municipalities who regretted it?
Well, there was, well, one of the issues, like with us, is they, you know, they were billed and collected, let me see here. Okay, so typically assessments, you know, like what they're talking about, are proposed, they're collected together with business license fees. Obviously, that doesn't work for us. We don't do that. It's, City of Livermore was one of the people I've talked to. She said the, there was not, you know, the reimbursement was not enough for what the city got out of doing it. There was a lot of gray area. They had to get lawyers and consultants involved, which they had to pay for, then had to go after the wine district to get reimbursed from. She felt that it was something that maybe, you know, the Chamber could handle, the Council of Tourism, Planning Department, and she just wanted to reiterate that it was not a tax. Don't call it a tax. You know, it's her legal department, you know, had mentioned that to them as well, so.
Yes, a question on that, maybe for, it might be a county council question. Say if this is implemented, and somebody says, I'm not paying, or assumes over the ordinance, who's going to pay that cost? Or the heritage district?
I don't know. The county would have to defend, ultimately, it's a county ordinance, it's a county, the county implements it. The county would be the main defendant. They would, presumably, the management owners entity that's created would also be a defendant. Presumably, that cost would fall to the county.
Okay. Well, thank you.
If it was challenged. These do exist elsewhere. I don't know of them being challenged. And we did, we did discuss this at the very beginning, and we raised the same questions. I mean, the problem is, you know, sometimes these fees like this, they get tacked on to property taxes. Well, we've got a mechanism, we just add a line item to the property taxes. Well, this is sales tax-based. We don't have really any role in that. And so we don't even have, we don't even build businesses. So since we don't have a business license tax, there's no existing sort of foundation to base that off of. So that was the problem. And then they reached out, and they have told us that HDL is willing to do this for the approximate amount that they have allocated towards the admin piece, the 1% or 3%.
One thing I found kind of ironic, I talked to Erica Wright here recently, and I thought, that's interesting. And she was dead-set against it. And one thing she said that I found kind of, I thought, darn, is I guess they want to do something kind of like this years back, and a lot of the wineries said, no, we're not interested. And now I'm going, okay, a lot of the wineries want to do it. Now she's saying, she's, you know, her and Jerry are not interested. So I guess it's all a matter of how you broach things or timing. But, okay.
As a follow-up question, did those cities have a true-up mechanism?
I had only found, I had only talked to the one.
Okay, so it's limited.
I couldn't find, yeah, you know, any, you know, as far as anybody else that was participating in this, that, you know-
Okay.
That was relevant to our county.
John's coming.
Relevant to our county.
Yeah, I think John's coming to answer that question. Just, okay, thank you. Because that's what you need to do, is be able to true-up, because you're guessing.
I'm just, I talked to the one, and, but, yeah, she couldn't-
Very limited scope.
Yeah, she couldn't find anybody else within, that was similar to our situation, you know, to be able-
We find that happens to us a lot. When we did, when we did meet with staff and even council, we, again, it's our intent, and then there's ways to do it. In advance of this, we can certainly identify a contract. If the county can identify additional cost risks that we can cover, it'd be better to cover it at the outset and have it contracted, so we have something durable to rely-
I'd be more comfortable, yeah.
But there's other ways to do it besides saying, you know, you need to collect it. I will say, these districts are not all, as was mentioned, some are based on business licenses, some are based on property tax, the property-based improvement district, some are based on, in this case, a subset of a sales tax. So it's, it is an assessment, it's not a tax, but it is a sub, you derive it from a subset of sales tax in this case. But anyway, our intent is to work with the county and work with staff and make sure the county's not out of pocket. And I think there's ways to do that, so it's reliable.
Curiosity question here is, how opposed are you to run through HDL?
We're not opposed at all. We actually reached out to HDL to secure what they would charge for this. And again, I think, obviously, if it gets traction- And again, I think obviously, if it gets traction and it looks like it's something that's going to happen, we would want to confirm that before.
Well, the biggest thing is I see for the county is if we were to do it, of course, we would possibly have to hire somebody else as a part-time. And then if we have a five-year sunset, and you say, oh, this is not working for us, we have to fire that person because we don't have the capability to absorb that person into our accounting. And so that's kind of a, part of the tricky part of all this, that I want to make sure.
I think it would be preferable to contract, whether it's HDL or there's another way. I think that would be preferable.
Yeah, okay, I think so too. Thank you.
You know, one more question, John. Wineries that are not wanting to participate, have they really told you why?
Yeah, not all of them, but some have said, look, I want to make sure that, that if I'm getting assessed and I'm passing it through to my customers, that I have a say that's proportionate in governance to my contribution to this whole thing. Others have said, we don't like it. I also spoke with the rights, and they had made a run at doing this many years ago. And I think because others weren't willing to join at that time, I think there's some.
Can't blame them to a certain degree, I mean, really.
So, I mean, people have their own reasons. The only thing I would say is, we do have long-tenured wineries, large and small, that may not support it. But we have many long-tenured wineries, large and small, that do support it. And so it's trying to balance the interests. And one of the reasons we've tried to be deliberative is, and taken two years to do this, is we didn't want somebody to say, oh, where did this come from, and how did this get traction? We've really made the effort. But we have, as I mentioned at the outset, we have identified broad support of those who have responded. We have identified some strong resistance of those who have responded. But we have still a number of wineries, and I don't know about you, I have a winery, and we have 98 O2-licensed wineries. I can't get to 98 when I think about where are they, but there are 98 licensed wineries in the county. But I think.
I think your problem too is it's not just there's 98 in the county. There's 98 in that county, and this county, and 500 in that one. It's, your competition is pretty fierce.
But if you look at, if you look at Temecula, and you look at Livermore, notwithstanding the comments about issues with collection in Livermore, they've been very happy with what it's done to try to differentiate themselves and differentiate their wineries and create a catalyst for economic activity in their regions. And I, again, as I said, there are several of these in Sacramento that are P-bids, that are the property-based improvement districts. And those business owners like Midtown Sacramento and other places, they took it upon themselves because local governments didn't have money to do graffiti removal and security lighting and a lot of things that had to be done to maintain their customer and visitors. And they've been very happy with it. In fact, I think the downtown partnership is in the midst of looking at re-upping for tenures in their subsequent ones, so.
Well, any other members of public, Tacey?
I just want to thank you for listening to all the information and considering it. And I can't remember if it's potentially part of the contract, but maybe it might be a good idea to think about negotiating that there may be an independent audit of their financial information at some point within that five years to potentially help add credibility to the figures that the county's going to be looking at and the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like nobody, no more public comment this time. What's the board's pleasure?
Supervisor Ax, you wanted to.
Sure, I'll make a motion then to approve the resolution declaring the intention to create a wine heritage district, and the second resolution requesting that the cities of Plymouth, Amador City, and Sutter Creek all participate in the creation of this district. And I think that covers it.
You did, I'll second that.
All right.
We have a motion by Ax and a second by Crew on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous, 401. Thank you.
Break time?
Yeah, I think it's break time. We'll come back at about, let's say, roughly quarter till. Thank you.
Call this meeting back to order. And next up is that we have five D. This is presentation by Chuck Allier, CEO, to the board regarding the current status of 2023-2024 budget. I got delayed out there wasn't quite. Oh, thank you, supervisor crew. Item six, public hearing at, well, 10:30, a little past that. First item six A, this surveying department, public hearing and adoption of the resolution of approval for a public utility easement abandonment and a strategic merger for Gary Allen, Diane M. Henriquez. Mr. Pitto?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you, kind sir.
Get over here where I can get into a microphone. Thank you. Yes, this is, it is nice to be back, believe me. Gary and Diane did a merger with an adjoining parcel. They're smaller parcels. They didn't have a lot of room to construct what they wanted to construct. And they own the parcel next door, which they want to merge now into the other parcels so they can build the shop. And I know I've had no letters or comments. I've had positive comments from the Amador Water Agency. They don't, they've reviewed the concept. They have no issue. And there's no other known issues, so I suggest that we adopt the resolution. And this abandons, I handle the BLA, this abandons the utility easement that goes across the line. We want to remove. Thank you.
Well, thank you. At this time, open the public hearing. Any members of the public like to comment?
To close the public hearing?
Have a motion by Brown and a second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, carries four zero one. Now we're looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion then to approve the resolution for the merger.
Okay, and also a public utility easement abandonment?
And the utility easement abandonment.
Okay. A motion by Axe, a second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Nice seeing you.
Like always, good seeing you too.
You're not going to be here for the other ones?
Nope, it's planning.
Oh, okay.
You're off the hook.
Thank you, Roger. Roger that. Moving down to item six B. This is consideration of the planning commission's recommendation to approve a variance. This is Johnson from the 25-foot front yard setback requirements and public utility easement setbacks requirement on final subdivision map number 116 to allow construction of a carport 10 feet in the front property line and three feet in the public utility easement.
Good morning, Nicole Shepherd with the planning department. This project was previously reviewed by the technical advisory committee on January 4th, 2024. Tac forwarded the project to the Amora County Planning Commission with no technical objections. The planning commission then reviewed the project during its regular meeting on February 13th of 2024 and recommended approval of the project along with the CECL exemption under section 15305, class five of the state CECL guidelines.
Okay, well, thank you. This time we'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public? Okay, motion to close the public hearing by Axe?
Second.
Second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving the variance from the 25-foot front yard setback and public utility easement setback requirements.
Okay.
Okay, and also we're, we're approving the adequacy of the proposed notice of exemption under CECL. Is that part of your motion?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous?
I guess in the findings too, so.
Yeah, findings too, okay. We'll make that part of the motion.
All right.
All right, well, thank you. Item six C, planning department.
Hello, Ruslan Bratton with the planning department. So this is a consideration of the planning commission's recommendation to approve a request for zone change from the manufacturing zoning district to the residential estates zoning district for an approximate 24.67 combined acres of two non-contiguous parcels to establish consistency with the AG general plan designation. The, the current zoning, like I said, is manufacturing, which is incompatible with the current general plan land use designation. And the, the proposed zone change would rectify that. So permitted uses in the residential zoning, residential estates zoning district are single-family dwellings and accessory buildings and accessory uses. Other compatible zoning districts in the AG general plan land use designation are AG Act General, which is synonymous with the Williamson Act, A agricultural, RE residential states, R1A, single-family residential and agricultural, and MR mineral resources. Additionally, currently approximately half of the smaller property that's proposed to be rezoned is, is already zoned R1A, single-family residential and agricultural. But the, the rezone is to, to fully rezone it to residential states. So the, following the public hearing, the first action for the board should be a decision on the environmental document, a mitigated negative declaration. And then the board can either approve or deny the project. And if you choose to approve it, the, the findings in the staff report are recommended for inclusion.
Do we know why it was originally set up for manufacturing?
I think.
For the history on that?
Back in the day, a, a lot of that area, a lot of the parcels to the northwest and south are also zoned manufacturing. And one day they will be rezoned to match the general plan.
I mean, I, I know that the south, there is a, an old mine, you know, rock quarry, I should say, you know, sitting in that area. And I'd be under the manufacturing area, but I didn't think there was any mines or anything else up toward the, the north area of Volcano.
Historically, I would imagine, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Couple of questions. What can the RE, can this property be subdivided into lots?
No, the density is established by the general plan, which in this case for that area is Ag General, which is 40 acre minimums. So you'd need at least 80 acres to split.
All right, so it is what it is, and this is something on paper, really?
It's to fix the, the consistency with the zoning in the general plan.
But it's not going to change anything?
Well, it'll allow them to build residential uses.
But is, how many residential dwellings can you put on that property then?
So with the two properties, we look at a net increase of one additional dwelling because currently one of the properties is already split zoned R1A, so.
So that'd be an ADU type of?
No, so the, the bigger property of the two, it's full manufacturing. Can't build a house there yet.
Okay.
All right. That's fine.
You know, at this time, we're going to open up the public hearing. And Heather, you have a comment on Zoom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have Mr. Barocco. Please unmute on your end when ready.
Good morning, Board. Greg Barocco from the Federal Conservancy. Just wanted to put in a, a brief word of support for this application. It's a bit of anachronistic zoning. I think it was aspirational in sometime in the 1960s or 70s that this might be a, a future mine site. But what we're left with is the manufacturing zoning, which allows, which creates a loophole for a variety of heavy industrial uses in the volcano countryside that's where it's not really appropriate. The general plan already made the correction by designating the area for agriculture, and this merely implements that land use change. And we further call on the county to complete a comprehensive zoning map update so that all the properties, both in Volcano and throughout the county where these zoning inconsistencies exist, can be corrected. And they don't have to be addressed as individual applications. So, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. Any other members of the public? Were you wanting to speak, Mr. Kettering, or? Okay. Uh, we, we have a motion, well, to close the public hearing. All in favor? Well, you motioned by Crew, and who was the second? Second was by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, carries unanimous?
I'll make a motion to approve the mitigated negative.
Can you hold, hold off that a second there, Frank? I, I had a question for Greg.
Okay.
There's some, there are some letters that were questioning the adequacy of the mitigated negative deck in this situation is like, they're talking about like water lines weren't looked at. Is that something that would be, have to be in, oh, mitigated deck as far as looked at, first, CECL?
Well, I, I've, I've talked with Deputy County Counsel Glenn Spitzer, who worked on this project, who sat with the planning commission as well. And his opinion is that the, the mitigated negative declaration is adequate.
It's a fish and ten?
Yes.
And we received a late letter, and I imagine staff probably looked at that and saw that letter too.
Yeah, from the Sularin Missouri. I think they were just referencing their previous comments, right?
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to note that for the record, so. With that point, I think I got no more questions. Frank, you're?
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve the mitigated negative declaration, approve the requested zone change, approve the, the ordinance to change the zoning to, of the affected parcels from M manufacturing districts to RE residential estate zoning district. And accept the findings, the recommended findings.
Yeah, and, and also let the, maybe a, maybe a negative deck was adequate then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had proved that, yeah.
Can we do that all in one motion?
Can we do that all in one motion, Greg? Okay.
All second.
All right, a motion by Axe and a second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries four zero one. Thank you, Ruslan. Moving on down, let's see, going back to, it would be, that's what I'm looking for, five D. Lost tracker. Would be a budget update by Mr. Riley.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is that time of year again, and a time when we take a look at, at our budget after we're halfway through the current fiscal year. Time to start the budget process for next fiscal year and, and start that whole process of, of having everybody give us their wish lists for what they, they want to see in the budget. Just a quick, a quick reminder on what we approved last year. Last year, we had a $50.18 million general fund. Between the, the 48.18 in revenues and $2 million carryover, total million, total budget 50.18 million. The, there, as, as I talk about this, there are going to be a few things that are going to throw things out of whack a little bit in the future, namely the, the jail project. Because it's going to bring funds into and out of the, the general fund that will give it a little bit of, I guess, false inflation that it looks like it's, it's larger than it is. You'll, you'll see what I'm talking about. Here's a history of the, the general fund. You can see from 1314 to 2324, we've grown from 33 million to 48 million. At this point in time, this year in 2324, we've received 46.93% of our, our anticipated revenues, which is about in line with what we typically get. It's not, we're about right in the middle. The expenditures, same thing, 50.18 million in expenditures. We're a little bit higher at 48.61% than we are in revenues in terms of the fact that we're 50% time-wise through the, through the year. So what's happening with revenues? Our, our local sales tax, the Bradley Burns tax is, it's slowing down. It's not, not regressing, but it is, it, it is not rising as fast as we thought it would. We, if you recall, we've talked about this every year, that the sales tax keeps going up. And it's still going up this year, but it's just going up at a lower rate. So we're probably going to be about $70,000 short of what we had anticipated there, which would come out of the, the carryover.
But, but wasn't the sales tax kind of rising because inflation kind of, you know, took everything up to be, and now we've kind of plateaued or restabilized?
Plateau, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And along with the fact that there's a lot, lot more being sold locally via mail.
Right, but we're collecting that, aren't we? We do get that money, yeah, okay.
We do, versus people actually driving out of the area to go buy stuff at a brick and mortar. So Prop 172, the half-cent sales tax is actually coming in a little bit higher. So if we call the, the difference between the Prop 172 tax and the one Bradley Burns tax, the Bradley Burns tax is actually what is spent locally. The Prop 172 tax is collected statewide, and then they give us a chunk based on a percentage. So TOT tax is actually going up significantly higher than where we thought it was going to be. The Jackson Rancheria, we've received the funds from them that they had promised us, and we are anticipating the same amount for next year. That is a voluntary contribution. And I'll talk about that a little bit more. The Harrah's Northern California contribution, the ISA calls for $1.4 million. They are paying us zero. So we have put that agreement on hold for the time being. But I don't know how long it will be until their non-payment affects others and their choice to voluntarily pay. Transfer taxes are down, so 20% below where we had budgeted. This is the, the slice that the recorder takes when they record a, a deed or a transfer. Obviously, with interest rates being high, the real estate market would slow down, and that's what we're seeing. That is, that is, it's taking a bite from the recorder's budget. Here's what, what we've seen from property taxes year over year. It has been, it has risen fast. We are projecting, and we'll get to that in a little bit, but we are projecting it to slow back down to 2%. Last year, we were over 4. This year, we're, we're back to projecting 2. There's the sales tax. You can see it's, it's slowing down a bit. The, there's the, the trend by quarter. There's typical quarters that, that always dip, not unusual, but that's, that's where we are.
Why do we have the Q2 drop?
The, I don't know. That's a good question. Why does it always drop in Q2, except for 2021? So what's happened with expenditures? So we, we're, we figure we're going to save about $651,000 in unfilled vacancies and unpaid leaves. We did prepay our purse, which saved us $219,000 by prepaying that at the beginning of the year rather than during the course of the year. And we still have the remaining contingency, which we typically don't hit too hard. 1.29 million in the contingency right now. Started at 1.5. So right now, we've slated our fund balance carryover at 1.5 million. The, we are projecting that property tax increase to be at 2, which is an increase of $433,000 to the general fund. The, we are restricted to, well, I should go back and, and re-explain the, the, our, if you own a property that max that your assessed value can go up any year is 2% unless you get reassessed for some reason, like you add a, a bedroom or a pool or something like that. Otherwise, it's capped at 2%. So even though property values are not going to be going up as significantly, there's still a, a catch-up between what we're assessing and what the actual value is. So that, that still goes up. We, we will see 2% is a pretty good conservative amount to be estimating. And property tax in lieu of VLF is also at 2%. And we talked about the Bradley Burns sales tax. So we are projecting a flat amount. So this year, we're going to project, we've got the same amount as last year. And we are not including any excess tax loss reserves. I'm not sure where that, that fund is right now. Tacey, do you know? Right now, we're leaving that in. That'll be in our back pocket if we need it.
You know, Chuck, why did documentary transfer tax drop? Has it been less sales or?
Much fewer sales, many fewer, yeah. So this, the, the real estate market as a whole is just kind of frozen.
Yes, it's 20% substantial.
It is, it is significant, significant drop. So the other expenditures for expenditure assumptions for 2425, we are estimating wages to go up by $624,000 due to increases that we've got, to increases that we anticipated, anticipate other costs. The purse unfunded liability costs are estimated to increase by $747,000. That is counting as a whole. That is not just the general fund, but it will also hit the realignment funds as well. I am focusing right here on the general fund. The health insurance costs are anticipated to go up 10%. So, and we've set the contingency at 1.4 million. The, which is 2.8%, are, we strive to be at 3%, so the contingency is a little low. But I do believe that we're, we're okay. We've never, actually never used half of that contingency, so.
That's our total contingency for the fiscal year?
That's, yes, we, we could tap into reserves if needed, if it were an emergency, so.
Okay. I just thought it was, I wasn't sure whether it was specific for one aspect of the budget or for, for any budget issue.
It's for any, any budget issue.
Okay.
And, and that's what we touch, and typically, we don't hit, we don't use half of it, and it rolls forward to the next year. The A87 cost to the general fund is going to go down by $114,000 per our consultant. We're looking at all other operating expenditures, the status quo from 2324. The, our risk pool, liability property and workers' comp went up by 865. Actually, that was until last week. That's, that number's been revised to 914, so that's another $50,000 that's going up. So the, but that's not reflecting in the.
What's, what's that yearly number?
Which one?
What's the yearly cost of that roughly?
The tot- I'll I'll show you that in just a second.
Okay.
We've got a got a, there it is right there. The um so uh twenty-four, twenty-five estimate, that's before we just got notification that the estimate has gone up by fifty thousand. Was it three point one million dollars? That's countywide. That's not just general fund, but that is countywide.
No, you said three point one million?
Three point one million for liability and workers' comp.
Why why is that? Is that because of claims, or is that because of inflation, or is that because of?
It's all of it. Now, we are part of a statewide pool, so our claims in particular don't necessarily uh reflect.
Like what's going on with us?
Yeah, we it gets mitigated by the fact that we're.
Have you ever looked at what our liability um costs are per year, what we're actual, what they're paying out versus what we're paying?
I mean, we we can, we can get that information, but we don't have it offhand. Uh you can see the the liability line is the blue line, and that's the one that's.
Yeah, two million.
Yeah.
I mean, my question is, I mean, what what are what are our limits for insurance? I mean, what are they? How how much are the insurance for?
I don't know. We we can, if you'd like, we can put a presentation together and bring it back.
I'd like that.
About that.
Are people suing more? Yes? Yeah, okay. Is that, but not here in Amador per se. It's statewide? Our pool, okay. Cause it was, you know, one time the liability was uh lower than the the workers' comp.
Right, right.
I mean, I I'm just wondering.
Five hundred thousand.
I mean, I I I I was just kind of curious. We've talked about that once before, what it'd take to self-insure, if you know, if that'd be a a worthwhile risk or not?
For for liability, that would be, that would be a different animal than we'd, we'd talk about self-insuring for or changing providers for health insurance for the employees.
Hmm, no, I also was wanting to know about.
For li- liability?
Yes.
Well, we can talk about that, but we'll have our risk manager uh put something together, and we can talk about it at the next board meeting.
Yeah, that'd be good.
If nothing else.
You could essentially raise your, we have a relatively low deductible or self-insurance level. You could raise that on the on the civil liability side. I don't know what that effect would have on the premium, though.
Yeah, I'd be cu- curious to see that. And I'd be ki- I'm kind of curious to see what what, you know, what our limits coverage are, you know, for what we're paying.
Well, we can get all that and present that to you.
Okay, thank you, Chuck.
Sure. The um so the other elephant in the room is Calpers costs. As you can see, the uh the percentages uh vary. So uh up where we've got uh the miscellaneous plan is all the miscellaneous employees, the uh S C I U employees, management, mid-management, and confidential are all out of that. The county uh peace officer, that's gonna be the tier one, it's gonna be the the three at fifty tier. Uh it's uh it's gonna be the sheriff's office uh and their employees. We did start the the tier two before Pepper came in with the tier three. Uh there aren't that many folks on tier two in either one of those. Then S L P is the safety local prosecutor, which is uh uh for the D A's office. And you can see the percentages that uh that they take uh off, and these are just the normal costs. These are not the unfunded liability portion. This is just the uh the uh the normal costs. And the normal cost for uh the miscellaneous plan actually went down by four tenths of one percent versus the the C P O with where law enforcement went, both of those went up. So the unfunded liability is the other big one, and that's the one that that rose so much. You can see cumulatively how much each fund uh has to pay, and there's that's that's seven forty-six, nine seventy-one that we have to uh that is increasing. Now, that's across all funds again, but uh.
Chuck, that's from the loss three years ago in Calpers?
Exactly, the one, the one where they they actually had a negative return. Uh you can see where where um if you look back year over year, actually, twenty-three, twenty-four dropped the amount, the amount we had to pay actually went down from twenty-two, twenty-three. So it went down by two thirty-eight, and this year, it's going back up by seven forty-six. Uh and they're projecting that next year will go up by another hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. So but one of the reasons last year was was uh we had so much room in the budget was because of this. Rather than going up, which is what we've been experiencing for so long, it actually went down.
Yeah, that's almost like a million-dollar differential, yeah.
Exactly.
I mean, those, but it's been going up. I mean, those are big numbers in the sevens, eights.
They are, and people ask that question, cause there there's been so much increase in in property value. Where where has the money gone? And this is where the vast majority of the money has gone.
Well, maybe my memory might be faulty, but as I remember, it wasn't that long ago. I think you had um the Calpers Board and the legislature and the governors pushing going green, and they got out of, they got out of all kinds of um investments, oil and other ones. They divested themselves because they're saving the world. And I and I think there's also some chicanery going on in in the Calpers system at the highest levels. And the problem is, um, we're paying for it. And actually, I think there was a, I think there's some absolute malfeasance and illegal stuff being done there by the Cal, some of the Calpers um higher echelon that came out in the wash where people were um buying their buddies' projects and spending all kinds of a lot more money than it's worth. And some people should have went to jail, but.
No accountability.
No.
Any other board lost twenty percent, they'd be looking for a job.
So the uh continuing on the uh, I shortened our SWOT analysis down just to the threats. The um, these are the things that that we see that are gonna potentially bite us over the course of this year or next few fiscal years. Uh there are currently five capital cases pending, uh and uh unless somebody has the the resources to defend themselves personally, the public defender, which is funded by the general fund, covers the cost. Our uh our agreement with the public defender has a limit to how much, uh since we have a lump sum agreement with the public defender, there's only so much uh, so many capital cases they have to work on at a time before us being responsible for it. And our estimate right now is it's gonna cost us about five hundred thousand dollars. Whether that's gonna hit this fiscal year, next fiscal year, or the fiscal years after that is still unknown. So we have not included that yet.
Where where's Judge Roy Bean when you need him?
He's out there. So we also have a person awaiting uh trial in custody that has had to go to a hospital in the Bay Area and is receiving care at about four hundred thousand dollars per year. So uh that is coming out of our jail medical fund, which is part of.
What's he awaiting trial for?
Uh it's uh.
So he's charged with um sexual molestation of a minor. There's a lot of issues going on in that case. Um we are trying to work on it. It, there is that cost.
So the uh, there is that cost, and we're, right now, we're taking it out of jail medical, which comes out of health.
Yeah, that's that's because his, the prisoner's health is in in shape.
Yes.
So he went to a hospital. He's covered by a program that's essentially Medi-Cal for inmates. That hospital care was covered, but then he was released from the hospital. He's in a skilled nursing facility because his needs are essentially too, too much to come back to the jail. So he's, has to be placed at a skilled nursing facility, which is not covered by this jail Medi-Cal program. Um so that that that's the county cost. It's thirty-plus thousand dollars to.
Yeah, thirty thousand a month.
A month.
Thirty to thirty-five, and we're not even sure that's all the bills we're gonna be getting, so, yeah.
That all goes on the jail?
Pardon?
It's a jail, it's a cost to the.
Health realignment in the jail.
It goes to the jail and jail medical, the the costs associated with jail medical come out of health realignment. So it um it's not hitting the general fund yet, but if that fund goes dry, then uh jail medical or uh the general fund will have to make up the difference.
Let's hope you don't have four or five of those cases in a year.
That is the concern. So um but that's why it's here. It's a potential for a a problem. Uh third, um the uh the casino issues. So we are, as was commented on earlier, we, there is uh, Iombande is uh working to open, and we are doing what we can to protect the county as best we can. Uh and um but we don't know what that mitigation's gonna be. We don't know if it's gonna be adequate. The county doesn't have a lot of um, doesn't have a lot of of, I guess, leverage in those negotiations. Harris continues to have an impact with zero mitigation, and we don't know when their case is gonna be resolved within the next couple of years. Uh the Jackson Rancheria is the uh is the shining star there, and they are paying everything we ask them for and uh to our great appreciation, uh but I'm just concerned that they're gonna get tired of being the only folks who are playing nice on the block. And um but I I don't know of a, another county our size that has three casinos, let alone three that have two that are not paying much in terms of mitigation. So and then uh the last threat, as I see it, is the jail expansion project. I think we have enough in there right now uh to uh to keep uh uh the project funded. You can see where we've we've contributed from, uh and we have a a sizable contingency on it. We have a a contingency on that contingency. I think we are in good shape. Um as long as John doesn't bring us to the brink and uh something goes wrong. I don't anticipate that. It's but it is a possibility, so we're talking about it here.
Can we threaten to take his retirement away?
Yes. He he volunteered to put that up as a guarantee. Um so uh that that's there. I don't really anticipate that that will, that jail will be a problem, but um it could be. It is out there. So uh putting all the the positives and negatives together.
You know, one one thing I'd like to back up that for a second, if we could. One thing I'd like to talk about is when we did this jail expansion project, it was kind of done under duress. Like, we, you know, we're loo- looking at maybe a possible lawsuit coming, um and the county have to build a jail, expand the jail on its own dime. And we got a a grant, I think, about seventeen million dollars, which would have been a fully funded project, or at least real close to it. And the county was sued under SEQA. Um I think it's kind of a pretty nefarious lawsuit. But under the way SEQA's set up, you can sue ju- or just about anything, and the county won. And then they appealed it once or twice. I can't remember if it was once or twice.
Twice.
Okay.
Well, they 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 appealed it to the appeals court, and then they appealed it to the Supreme Court.
Yeah, so um and those were their actions taken by this one couple. Now Hazard Jail, what is that, all a little over twelve million dollars uh uh in the red, which was um basically no fault of the counties, but I just I just wanted to put that on the record. So that's why you have that uh, why you have the obligation that's went up.
Right, and and that that, and I I should say that everybody is participating that with, in that, in terms of uh covering those costs. The um the C C P is in there for seven million dollars. We're taking three million from capital facilities, which is local development. The one and a half million from moral crimes, which is the sheriffs, and the two point one in jail reserve, and it's general fund. So um yeah, it it's all across the board. We've we've uh put all of this together to to close that gap.
Well, just that that lawsuit they filed into SEQA, I mean, basically hurt the county.
Right.
Twelve million dollars, basically.
It would have been far less than that.
Yeah.
Amount right there. So uh putting all the positives and negatives together, right now, uh when we put this together was fifty-seven thousand. Since this, since we put this together, we've, the liability and and workers' comp insurance has gone up by fifty. So that's about a hundred and seven right now, uh rather than fifty-seven, which is is not great, but uh it's still uh manageable without ne- needing to cut, have cuts. I don't anticipate we will, we will need to cut any positions at all.
Does this include adding those two positions for public works?
No, it does not.
Okay.
So if you would like to give me direction to add those, I would, will do that.
What point would you like the board to give you that direction?
Let me finish this page, and then then you can, you can do that. The um so um right now, our base budget calculating by, calculated by updating all our known changes to revenues and expenditures before budgets are given to the departments. The departments got their budgets yesterday, uh and with directions for a status quo budget. So you're, so the general fund will will cover the increased costs to employees, and we say if you have additional costs, uh for the most part, uh you need to uh augment that with additional revenue. So um so to bring you in at a status quo budget. So the impact of the general fund will go up a little bit, and that's where the, our additional sales tax and our additional property taxes will go to cover those, uh and then everything else will be, you've got, we expect the departments to be self-sufficient. Stating that further, yeah, the employees and the position step and longevity increases are all covered already. They don't, the departments don't have to cut or find ways to to cover those, and uh we do have the negotiated wage increases in there. Uh the um, sorry, I need one more page. The uh the budget calendar, this is what, this is what we are proposing right now, which is, uh budgets went out to departments yesterday. Uh Kim's gonna do her budget orientation with the employees who are in positions to, that need to uh uh understand this, where we train them on on, you know, revenues and expenditures and uh what means what. Uh April first, the budget submitted's come back, and April eighth through the twelfth, we'll all be sitting down and making sure we understand who's asking for what and uh and why. So uh the first question for the board comes April thirtieth. We've got a proposed budget workshop. Does that work? That's a Tuesday, I believe.
I am not available.
There's always one.
There's always one.
Crowd. The uh, are you out for that, Frank? Send it pretty.
Two weeks.
Just that date.
That's the the set date for my my trip.
The uh, when will you be back?
I will be back on the ninth of May.
What about the twenty-ninth? When are you leaving on your trip?
I'm go- I leave on the twenty-fifth. I'm from the twenty-fifth through the the ninth.
What about?
Twenty-fourth?
Sometime like the twenty-four, twenty-second through the twenty-fourth.
The issue becomes.
Board meeting's on the twenty-third.
Would twenty-fourth work?
Issue comes us having it all put together and having it to you in time to, you can digest it. So if I don't finish, yeah, we could do, well, I think.
What time are you getting back, Jeff?
The ninth.
Ninth?
I'll be back in the office on the ninth.
Okay.
The twenty-fifth or the twenty-sixth?
Yeah, I'll be gone the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Oh, so the twenty-fourth, okay.
I could do the twenty-fourth.
Should we do the twenty-fourth?
I could do.
That's all day.
I have a ten o'clock uh E M C C meeting, but other than that, that's it.
The uh, we would not be able to make that meeting. That's our all-day.
Oh, okay. Well, it's here anyway.
Just call in sick.
Well, it won't be in this room.
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth?
So we're talking April twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
What time?
Eight?
Uh we could, we can start it at nine.
Nine?
Yeah, what's this eight o'clock stuff?
Yeah, and hopefully Supervisor Forster will be.
I'm compromising.
All right.
Okay, so then uh following that, we would bring uh back the budgets to for, to the board for approval for on June eleventh. The uh statutory requirement is by June thirtieth, so if June eleventh, there was some hangup with it, we could uh, we could approve it at the June twenty-fifth meeting, too. So one of those work, and then September tenth would be. So, one of those work. And then September tenth would be final budget, which has to be approved by the end of September. So, we'd be there as well. So, that is all I've got to, to show you for now. So, I will, I know Lois had questions on that. And I will say, I think the difference between our county and a lot of the other counties is reliance on state, state funding, state and federal funding, because the, the state is in trouble this year and they are clawing back everything they can. There was concern that the Upper Ridge Road funding was gonna be clawed back. And I've checked with, with Dana Jorgensen and, and he said, hold off, don't do it, because we were gonna, we were gonna select a consultant to, to do that design. And he double-checked and, and it, there was, there were some folks who were nosing around, but it's, it's been fended off and the money is still there.
Because I, I thought we got a big check.
We have a big check, but that has no account numbers on it. I would say.
There's another one, Frank, if you want us.
There should be, there should be a law. When you get to the big check stage, it's, it's beyond the point of no return.
The, yeah, so we got the big check. The, the cash has not been received from, because it's going through Caltrans, Caltrans. So.
Oh, no.
That's.
Oh, boy.
They are not, they are not doing this project and they're not making us do, that was my big concern. They are just funneling it through their coffers for some reason. I don't know why. But it's not in our hands yet and that is, that is a concern. But overall, our dependence on state grants and other funding is, is minimal. We rely for the most part on property taxes and sales taxes. There are some grants here and there, but we don't recall, rely on them for recurring, recurring expenses, whether we use them for one, one and done. And as such, we have found that we are not in a position where we need to make cuts just because the state is backing off of, of funding. So, it leaves us in a better spot.
You know, one thing I will say, I mean, I thought it was coming for quite a while and it seemed like it's, they've kept this tired horse running, but it's starting to look like things are slowing down.
They are. Things are slowing down.
And I know just talking to people, you know, I mean, I'm hearing people, there's a number of people having, they're, they're really feeling a lot of pain just buying food. And now you got energy costs are skyrocketing, insurance costs are going up. I mean, it's, it's not looking very pretty. So, I think probably, you know, I, I think we need to add a couple positions to public works. I mean, I really don't want to, but I think we have to. We got a lot of road problems. And there's, we don't have enough people in that road crew. So, I mean, that's where I'm at. I don't know how, how the board feels about adding a couple positions to public works, but now's probably a good time to talk about it, Chuck.
So, are we talking road crew positions?
Yeah.
Okay.
And these would be like entry level?
Probably. I mean, yeah, I think so, yeah.
Right, I would.
Public Works one, two?
I recognize the need, but I don't see where we're gonna come up with the funding at this time. I kind of wait till after we see the budget. The workshop would give us a much better idea.
Yeah, we can, we can look at it with and without during the workshop.
Yeah. Now, to have, to what it would cost if you could get that for us. So, we could plug and play if we find that we can do it, but I don't think we're ready to commit to that as much as we do need it.
I'd like to look at adding them in. I mean, yeah.
It'll, it'll probably be total cost somewhere around ninety to a hundred thousand per position.
Yeah, two hundred thousand.
You know what I mean? I, I think I'd be looking at maybe a couple. I think there's eighty, a couple of departments might be a little bit heavy on some staffing. I think that's been a problem for quite a while. I think I'd like, I'd like to look at that. I'm, I'm talking specifically, I'm not talking deputy sheriffs. I'm talking sheriff's office. When they have some of their higher positions go vacant, I mean, I'd like to see them look at not filling them.
At least do a time study and show us how, why you need them instead of just we do.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm sure they find a need. But I, I have my doubt that the need is there. And then maybe, I'd seen some numbers on like our DA's department, what their cost is to our county versus some other counties, and it seems like it's rather high. And maybe if you could look into that some more, Mr. Eylee, that'd be helpful.
I still would like to see his conviction rate. I've asked a couple of times and got nothing, so maybe if you asked for it as part of his budget.
Well, yeah, the conviction rate, but you know, I'm just gonna digress for a minute if you'll give me a little room. I'd like to tell you a story. Nothing against, nothing against the current DA, but just sometimes how, when you talk about conviction rates. Many years ago, there was a curly-headed guy that's getting kind of bald now. Was coming out of the mountains, well, his backtrack. So, the county went and passed a ordinance. And my mom went and spoke to the ordinance, says, I really don't, don't want it, don't need it. And the ordinance was to, anybody that was cutting firewood in Amador County had to have a permit to haul firewood in Amador County. And mom, my mom said, we don't want it, don't need it. And I said, oh, it's gonna help you because people won't be able to steal wood or whatever. And I think it's really aimed towards the national forest where now it's all rotting anyway, so I mean, didn't do much good. And so, they passed this ordinance and low and behold, I was fresh out of high school. The last thing I wanted was a pencil in my pickup. I was, I was out of school. I was free. So, I went and cut a big load of fenomorous firewood or fence post, had a piece of ground we have in the mountains. I was coming down out of the mountains. And I got pulled over by a sheriff's officer because I had such a big load, had to go pretty slow. And he wanted my permit. I told him, well, geez, you know, didn't have a pencil, so I hadn't wrote one else. I didn't have one. I said, but give me a pen, a piece of paper. I'll write out my permit, because you can write out your own permit, which is kind of silly if you think about it. And he seemed pretty reasonable. He said, okay. He goes and he went back to his car and I thought he was gonna get a pen, a piece of paper, and I'd write out a permit and be then legal. He came back, he says, here, take it up with the judge. I thought, ooh, that was kind of, kind of ugly, but, oh, part of the problem was I couldn't find my wallet and it was, I think it was in a coat pocket and so maybe that was why he did it. Anyway, so, they wrote me a ticket and went before the local, went to DA. And my mom was kind of mad and I was like seventeen years old. And she went and say, what are we, what are we, why are you prosecuting this? It's, you know, it's off our property. He'd wrote out a permit. Well, you have to follow the law. I don't have to prosecute him, so. Um, I was a young kid and I remember my mom blew a gasket and she's, well, he's got no damn money. You can prosecute him. You can defend him. You can have all the damn fun with him you want. And they did. They prosecuted me and defended me and so they went and got me a public defender. And I was seventeen years old, I think roughly. So, I went to a public defender's office and he had this law book open and he told me, well, Mr. Onidl, I've been studying this case and it seems very serious and yada, 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 but I have a plea deal with you with the DA. I thought, hey, great. He says, I don't remember. I think it's one week's probation. I said, no, but I'm not guilty of anything really wrong and didn't harm nothing. So, I said, I'm not gonna plead guilty. So, he's, well, I'll go talk to him. So, he went and talked to the DA and this is going back like forty-some years ago, not the current administration. And he came back, hey, I got a, I got a deal for you. It was one hour or I think the rest of days probation. And, but I'd be guilty and it's on my record. And I said, no, I'm not doing that. Um, wouldn't do it. So, went before the judge and it was Don, it was Don Howard and ended up that, well, just needs to say, anyway, it got worked out. It's found not guilty. I don't wanna go into details that might be causing issues. But what was, what is interesting was they want the conviction on me for really something, really harmed nobody, done nothing really bad. Yeah, I was, I was a foul of a regulation. That was kind of bunk, but they want their conviction. They want their conviction rate, Pat. So, I look at the conviction rate. Sometimes it might almost be a bad thing because we're gonna convict you right or wrong. So, just, I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, my point to that being though is I hear out in the public and I'm sure you all have that we're ridiculed quite because we have a very low conviction rate. And I'd like to have the proof to, to tell people that's bunk. That's mine.
And you've, and you've asked and never got it.
Right.
Okay. I know it's a long one, but this kind of, I thought it's, it's interesting.
Very. We're ready to move on.
Yeah, if, if the board's happy with that direction, then we will continue on as, as.
We're, I think we're all happy.
Yeah.
And the date said for the workshop, so that was a big thing.
Twenty-fourth, April twenty-fourth, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I'd like to see the road crew members, but I understand where other board members are coming from. That's prudent. But so, we'd kind of like to do that, but let's see what the facts are.
Right. We got time.
Yeah. I'm good with that.
Yeah, there's a need, but we're gonna pay for it.
Yeah.
So, Heather, you will reschedule the EMCC?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Okay. Is that done with your presentation, Mr. Eylee? It was a good presentation, so thank you.
Short and sweet.
Um, no zoomers? Any members of public like to comment? Seeing none. We'll move on to the next item. This item five E, General Service Administration acceptance of a donation to Amador County Animal Control by the Gary E. Neuse Trust.
Mr. Chairman, don't we have to approve the budget calendar or can we just by consent?
Direction's fine.
Okay.
There's no statutory requirement that you approve that other than.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can you give me just a half a second here?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to compliment Evan on coming to my District Three Community Council last night. He did an excellent job and answered everybody's questions and didn't get a pitchfork from anybody. So, it was a really great evening.
Thank you for that. And sometimes we do worry about the pitchforks when I do presentations like that, so thank you, sir. So, I'm Evan Jacobs, Director of Animal Control. I hope, I come to you with a better figures than, you know, previous. So, in accordance with the county gift policy two dash two seven zero, any gift greater than ten thousand dollars requires acknowledgement and writing from the department and referral to the board for acceptance or rejection. There is also a draft letter that we do seek approval for. I'll read the background history. Gary E. Neuse lived in the twelve thousand block of Jackson Pine Drive in Jackson. He passed away on March fourth, twenty twenty-three and named Amador County Animal Control as one of five benefactors of his trust. Mr. Neuse served in the Navy for approximately ten years where he was a navigator slash bomber in the Vietnam War and retired as a lieutenant commander. He went on to work for the Alameda County Sheriff's Department as a deputy until the late nineteen nineties. When he retired, he was passionate about rescuing animals and finding suitable homes for them. He had a special appreciation for what animal control does and our mission and showed his appreciation by leaving a portion of his, of his estate in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. In June of this year, there'll also be another small portion, they think in the low six figures, but we won't know that until sometime in June and then we'll be coming back to you with that donation as well. So, kind of what we are looking for if seeking approval is what we would like is a barn. I call it shanty town. We use dog pens right now for our small livestock and they can easily get out. So, we would like to use a large portion of that for a barn. For the one-offs, we still use the fairgrounds for larger things, but it'll be nice to house them all here in one location. We'd also look at trying to expand at least one or two dog play yards for enrichment and just getting animals out of the shelter. We'd also like to look at new cat cages that are more in line with housing of, I call the twenty twenty-four versus what we have now. And then also, if possible, we'd like to look at getting an electric gate with pedestrian access to our facility for ease of stuff.
I'd just like to add real quick, Gary was my next door neighbor and, you know, he was, he was a good guy, so.
So, yeah.
Really? He's your next door neighbor?
He was my next door neighbor, yeah.
Yeah, we, we looked Gary up in the system because no one in our, my department knew exactly who Gary was. And he, the only thing we found him was he licensed his animals regularly, never had a complaint for, on his animals or never filed a complaint. He just licensed his animals religiously, so none of my staff was aware of ever knowing him personally. He might have come into the shelter to license, but you can also do it by mail. So, we were very shocked and happily gracious to receive such a bequest.
His wife was, who had passed away before he did, was a big animal lover. I don't know. I've told some of the board members about my interactions with her and the deer in the area, yeah.
Yeah, well, no, actually, I mean, hey, he had a mountain, a mountain named after him.
Oh, thank you for that. Yes. So, he was, from what I could surmise in talking with also the, the gentleman in charge of, Mr. Farnsworth, that, yeah, he was on some sort of exploration. I'm not the expert in this. And he was one to find a mountain. And so, I guess they went through the process and they actually named it after him. So, it was a very cool experience as well.
You know, I will say too, I mean, it's, it's really, it's really a very nice bequest to the animal shelter and, you know, it's like animals. I mean, you look at people, it's like, there's a lot of nice people. Some people aren't so nice. But most animals, unless they have a bad owner, almost all animals are really pretty nice generally. There's a, and even some of them being kind of mean, they're protecting their place and you say, hey, okay, that's your house. I'm not gonna bother you. They'll, okay, that's fine, but. And a nice thing about animals, they'll let you know where they're at. If they're mad and they may be gonna bite you, they'll let you know. And I got a cat who moved in about fifteen years ago and I always swore I'd never buy that stupid soft cat food that anybody did was just ridic, anybody did, it just had rocks for brains. And you know what I'm buying? I'm buying soft cat food. And, and he gets it when he wants. He kicks me out of bed to go feed him. So, animals have a way of really, way of working their way into your heart, so. I can understand his, the gift he gave the animal shelter and it's really, it's good. I'm hoping we honor what he'd like to have done. I think we will.
It'd be nice if the ledger got this information, maybe even did a separate story on him. You know, I think this is good community story, him donating this to the, the county and the shelter.
I know there's been a big need up there for, you know, a barn for animals and stuff like that. It's really come in real helpful.
Oh, extremely helpful. It does take a lot of staff and time. If we can't house it there in what I call shanty town, you know, especially the large livestock, right? Cows, horses, we can't house there safely. So, this will definitely benefit, you know, the department and the staff.
Just a quick question. You'd like to add an electric gate with pedestrian access to the entrance facility. Is that like the main gates when you're like locked up, so when people go through the main gates, I'm opening the whole big gates that we're talking about?
Yes, so typically we're, we don't open until ten and so people like to sneak in, you know, and we understand why. But that throws the cleaning procedures in, in a funk where we're trying to get everything clean so we can be open by ten without having too much burden. So, if they do need to sneak in, they can do it via walking in and our volunteers are walking twice a day. And so, that'll help them without having to, to disrupt that.
Okay. That seems reasonable. So, any members of public like to comment on this item? Seeing none. Need a motion to probably accept the bequest.
I would make that motion. We accept the bequest of Gary Neese Trust in the amount of four hundred thousand with the restrictions that are honored for the animal control.
And then the. Are you okay with sending that?
Send the letter.
That letter that I.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, very, very well-written letter.
Thank you.
Okay, you have a motion by Crew and a second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carry is unanimous, four zero one. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next item up is what we're looking for, minutes. Are you viewing approval? Possible approval of February twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, Board of Supervisors minutes.
I, I think you need to change the chair and vice chair on the first page.
That's got a little bit of a problem at times, yeah.
You're still vice chair, Brian.
Yeah.
So, that was the only thing I found.
Okay, so just a minor revision then?
Yes.
We have a motion by Axe and a second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carry is unanimous, four zero one. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you. We are adjourned until.
Bye.